All right, folks, we'll get started with the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, he did.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 9th, 2024 Dublin Town Board Meeting held here at the Dublin Town Hall. We'll have the roll call of the board members.
Dan Weaver, present.
Reece Hickock, present.
Rex Snyder, present.
Gene Gabbard, present.
And Nathan Alworth is present. We will have to table voting on the minutes until next month because we have a glitch in the system.
They're lost up there in the cloud somewhere.
So hopefully they come back down to us sometime soon. But we do have the adjustments and we need to approve those.
I make a motion to accept the adjustments as presenter.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Does somebody like to second that?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion will pass. We have a guest in the building tonight, Mr. Sam Messenger from Indiana Municipal Power Agency. What brings you this visit with us, sir?
Uh, so Mike Adams is on the way. He went to the fire station first, so he's on his way over here. It's our halftime report, so we're just gonna go ahead and talk about the stuff that we've been doing in town, see if you guys have any other areas of interest that you want to, want us to address, just the normal, uh, the normal halftime report, quarterly report, whatever we're calling it these days. So, um, if you guys have anything that you're thinking of while you're, while you're here, Mike is the operations manager for ISC. He kind of scouts out all the jobs. He, he's in charge of both the east side and the west side crew. If there's anything that you guys want to talk about now, we can talk about it, uh, definitely. Uh, but he's the guy who makes sure that it gets done and oversees everything. Um, I don't know if you guys have any ongoing projects or anything like that that you guys have questions about or anything, um, existing that you might, uh, you might ask him, uh, but he'll have answers for you or at least, uh, he'll be able to track down the right people. I am the IMPA representative, so I'm member services, so I just kind of tag along with Mike. And if you guys have any general IMPA questions, I can answer those for you. That's pretty much why I'm here though, is to, to meet you all and, uh, ask if anybody has any questions, invite you out to a board meeting to come with Nathan whenever you want. Uh, you're more than welcome to join us. Uh, we'd love to have you. Uh, we feed you pretty good too. After the, after the meeting, it's usually pretty good. So, um, we would offer a bunch of different programs as well. I gave Nathan a handout for lineman appreciation day. That's open to anybody, anybody as long as you're a member of IMPA. Uh, September 19th, we'd love you to come down, kind of see, uh, us celebrating our, our local lineman, our, our, our members lineman as well. Uh, we may have a couple non-members there too, so if you could sweep talk them into signing with us as well, that would be great. That would be great. Uh, but Mike's here, so I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to him. This is Mike Adams, operations manager of ISC, so if you have any questions or anything, uh, with, with our dedicated service program, he's the guy that's going to be able to answer that. Uh, I think he has a report for you that he'll show you, uh, our response times to outages and that, that, what have you.
All right. Hopefully I have enough. Thanks for giving me your time. It shouldn't be too unfamiliar to some of you, some newer faces, maybe you haven't seen us before. Basically, we're trying to make to have a, well, trying to have some metrics to work by, some things that, um, if you'd like to copy, sir.
Might leave one for Lenny back there if he hasn't had a copy given to him yet.
Okay.
Table, but you can leave that after the fact.
Yeah, I kind of miss him. I haven't seen him in a little bit, so.
He's on the ball field right now.
All right. So, um, basically it's year to date for June, uh, 2024. Uh, we'll open to this first page up here and talk about it. We have categories. We call these service metrics. One of them is pole replacements, service requests, outage restorations, vegetation management and engineering planning. And I'll talk a little bit, uh, about 2024 and kind of go down that list. Uh, it looks like so far, uh, this year to date, we've had five poles that have been replaced. Uh, 16 service requests have been completed, uh, seven power outages. Uh, vegetation management is pretty much ongoing. Come through town a few years ago and did a pretty good job initially, and then we've just been kind of in maintenance mode since then. Um, we try to do that program really in heavy side of it about every five years. It's pretty costly to do that, but we've always found that if you can get the trees and the limbs out of the primary space, uh, it'll lessen your outages.
You can get it through the tree or just the vegetation sticks out.
Uh, we, we do it around the primary. If there happens to be secondary below the primary, we kind of get that area too. Uh, but it's generally, we try to cut a little box in, in the vegetation.
You can pick out dead trees there. That's our problem.
Yeah, we, we try not to be in that, in that, you know, we're line, line folks. Uh, we do hire tree trimmers to come in and do that vegetation cutting. But there are times where we'll have to come in and work on a pole and we may have to trim back a little bit then. So in those cases on dead trees, we try not to get too involved in them because they are pretty costly, um, to take out, so.
And this is pretty good size when it's up above your power lines, so.
Oh, that's never good.
It's right beside them, so if it comes down, you're gonna lose a whole lot of lines with it.
So what we try to do is, uh, with the vegetation groups we hire, we do a 10-foot off of the line out cut, and that's sort of our ideal. So, uh, if it's outside of that 10-foot, uh, we typically don't really go after it too much. Uh, we cut anything that's over the top of it. We try to keep a 10-foot space there too. Sometimes it'll look like a tunnel, you know, a 10 by 10 tunnel through a space. Um, we try to keep it about that size because sometimes we have to have a man in a bucket or, you know, a worker in a bucket to get in there and work and really don't want them worrying about trying to get in the trees and keep out the power lines, so. Uh, the next page, uh, page three, it's green as well. Um, the categories here are line maintenance, tree trimming, light replacements, service repairs and service, uh, connects and disconnects. Looks like this year we've had 16, uh, service requests, kind of like as I stated earlier in the previous page, this goes down in a little more detail what those service requests were. Uh, looks like we've had three types. Nine of them were line maintenance, four were service repairs, and three were service, uh, connects and disconnects. So if we're asked for a total of 16, it looks like since, uh, we've been with the town, uh, since 2021, it looks like we've had about 52, uh, service requests and they're kind of spread out in those different categories. So if you'd like to take time and look at that later, uh, you're more than welcome to do that. Uh, outage restoration is on page four. This is the one that gets me, uh, kind of excited and probably the next page I'll kind of tell you why. Looks like to date, uh, we've had 53 power outages reported. In 2024, we've had seven so far. Looks like we're trending down a little bit. At least last year we had 18. If we stay on pace for the seven now, I don't, maybe have another six or so. Uh, so we might be around that 13 to 15 number. Uh, so when that trends down, that's always means a good thing, uh, to me. And I would imagine it does to you all as well. The page five, uh, goes to.
Can I ask a question while you're on the hour support?
Yes, sir.
I noticed under cause, weather is never a cause for any of the outage here?
Sometimes it is.
Because I'm just curious if it's always equipment or vegetation.
Well, no, we have, uh, we have quite a few other, uh, service metrics. It just so happens that so far, uh, at Dublin, we've had equipment and vegetation, it looks like. We, we have, we call them animals, so sometimes animals will cause an outage. Uh, sometimes, uh, like you say, weather, but we try to relate it to, is it wind or is it rain or is it ice, those kinds of things.
I know you didn't, I noticed you said you're on a downward spiral. However, you had three just in the months of June. So is it sometimes seasonal at all or?
Oh, it absolutely is. Yeah, it absolutely is. Uh, we've got, we have weather coming in tomorrow from, you know, we're gonna, it's residual from the hurricane that came through um, just earlier this week. Uh, you know, we're bracing for those kinds of things. So we're always on the lookout of what weather's gonna do to us because weather is, um, a, a pretty powerful factor in outage problems, so. Especially if you get wind or, uh, high, uh, well, wind will knock the trees over, right? One day it'll be nice and sunny. Yesterday it was windy as heck and it got it enough that on a bright and sunny day, all of a sudden the tree falls over. It's kind of, kind of crazy sometimes to kind of piece that together. Uh, the response duration, that column is the one that I always get real excited about. It looks like we're doing a pretty reasonable job. And when I say reasonable, I like to keep these down to an hour or less from a response time. We had, um, a couple earlier in the year were 20 minutes. Uh, it looks like we had one that was a, a 90-minute response in, uh, April, or yeah, yeah, April 18th. A 60 on the 19th, uh, 51 on the June the 9th. And then 6:15, we had, uh, 20, 67 minutes and then 86 here just recently. Looks like out of these, it looks like one, two, three, four, five of these were service repairs. So I don't think they were very widespread. When we get to line down and fuse repair normally, that's a much bigger, broader outage, so.
I was gonna say, do you even talk about how extensive the outage is, whether it's one house or the whole town? This doesn't show it here.
We don't, we don't show it here, but we keep that metrics. Uh, we have a pretty decent, uh, database on where outages are reported. Uh, one of the things that, um, we try to talk to our members about a little bit is when you report an outage, a lot, you know, a lot of times they'll call up and say, hey, the whole town's out. Or they'll call up and they'll say, hey, it looks like all the addresses along, maybe US 40 or a particular street. So that helps us, but oftentimes that's one call, one report, and typically they give us kind of a start address. So it's, it's a bit of a challenge sometimes for us to understand the breadth of the outage unless, you know, the people in the community tell us and then we're working on it. After the guys get in the town or the gals get in the town and they're working, they'll tell us internally how big the outage was. So we try to go back. If it was a fuse, we try to say, okay, it would affect at these kinds of customers. And we try to put that in our database. But I will say sometimes, uh, we don't get all of that information because maybe we don't have enough good information, you know, initially to start with. Uh, but your town is GIS, so we have it mapped up pretty good. We know where the fuses are, so we can do a pretty good job, at least in your community, of determining kind of the breadth of, of these outages, whether they're large or small, so.
Is there anything that Lenny or I need to do differently when we're calling in to better help you?
Uh, no, I think from, from your community, you guys do a really good job of, of reporting things. Uh, we have, and not to pick on some of the other communities, but they, some, I mean, we had a, um, a member that called in and said there was an outage. We came and worked, took care of everything that we thought we had to knock out. And then the next day we get a call from, uh, the town and they said, oh, so-and-so, they're out of power. They never called in and told us. They just knew that it was probably a, an outage in the community. Uh, and somebody else already took care of it. Uh, but then they called in the next day and said, hey, when are we gonna get our power back on? Like, oh, okay.
You, you can't tell from a master place who might have power and who doesn't, there's a power outage?
Um, in some communities we can. We have, um, some communities that have AMI. And we, we have a pretty good detail of if, if they're out or not because we have a, an iPad in our, our crew trucks. Um, it'll show whether the meters are green or red. If the meters are red, we're chasing them down and trying to get them turned back on. Um, I think you guys have, uh, what, a drive-by system?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we just don't have that level.
It's the high-dollar meters is what it is, huh?
Yeah. We just don't have that level of detail here, but I, I don't think we have that problem too often of not.
Usually if their power's off, they call pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Usually we call about 10 people pretty quick.
Yeah, I've talked to Lenny on the phone. He goes, I gotta go. People are calling.
For us to have that capability too, you'd have to have tan analysts and have to go through us to be able to, to, to have that as well. But with being a dedicated service member, if you ever wanted to do that, we offer the financing option of 10-year financing for AMI, so, um, that is an option.
And there were recently, I think there, the, the time to apply was, is ended for this year. But I think it's gonna open up again for next year.
Absolutely.
There's grant opportunities if you're interested. Uh, they're called infrastructure improvements. And one of the things in particular, um, that they're looking for is smart grid kind of things. And AMI falls into that. One of the things that we do have on our radar for Dublin is you're a Delta system, uh, 4KV. And we're looking at our engineering group and trying to put a plan together on possible conversion of your system to a, uh, 12KV system. That does a couple things for you. Out here where your delivery point is, there's a step-down transformers from 12KV because you get it at 12 to start with. You'll, you have losses in those transformers just because you're going from a, at one voltage to another. There's always losses in a transformer. Uh, they're, I don't know the age of them, of the transformers, but they are fairly, I would imagine they're probably pretty old.
They're not that old. They've been changing in the last 10 years.
Oh, nice, nice.
Yeah, we had one go bad and we had to shut the whole town down. And they come back with three other trying to, not only rebuild a lot, but they put two other trying to, but they do keep that, so.
But, but the good news about the, the 12KV, if, if you were, we, what we do is we put this plan together, bring it to the board. You guys can look at it and see what the cost might be and if it makes sense or not. But there's a couple of options with the 12KV system. It would be easy enough to set up a second delivery point. And so you would have a contingency, you know, from one side of town to the other side of town. So you'd have things like that available to you. If you were to try to do that with the 4KV system, it'd be a whole nother set of transformers and a whole nother set of metering, so it's a lot less costly to do that.
Don't we have to interrupt?
And then, like I said, you, you have the losses in the transformers. So there's a couple of reasons why you would want to maybe convert. But, you know, like I say, we'll put that in a plan and, uh, try to get that in front of you here before the next, uh, grant cycle comes in place. That way you at least have some options and if you choose not to do it, that's fine. If you choose to do it, then we can pursue it, so.
What, um, kind of matching funds do those usually require?
Um, right now, the, the grant that was in for this year, it was, I wanna say it was 38% you, you put up and then they matched it. What was it? Turned it to 60? So that Centerville is, I can't remember. Did they say they got the grant? So they were, they, they said we were gonna just do the four to 12 conversion anyway, so we put a plan together for them. They have it in three phases. They've already done the first one. They're starting to do the second phase. And that's when I think that they actually got the grant, which was nice because now they're able to, on the next two phases, get that included. Now, each one of those phases, I think, has to be done in five years, so there's a duration stipulation to it, but.
They also have AMI too, so if you had any questions on the four to 12 conversion or the AMI, Centerville could help you out on that as well.
And on page six, uh, like I said, you guys do a good job of communicating to us. There's a phone number, 765. That's our MOC number, so, uh, keep, keep that just in a small circle. Um, and we never have any trouble when, when you guys call through there. Some, some communities we have, they, I don't know if they have some backdoor channel numbers or what, but they tend to get the wrong person and where they don't say, hey, it's an emergency. They just said, hey, we need somebody to do something, um, maybe take a line down. But if you call the 765 number, it'd really be good if it was an emergency. Uh, because that's really what it's for, uh, because we'll dispatch 24/7, 365 days a year, so. And then for service requests, uh, we have a website. I think you guys have used it. And, um, so those service tickets get generated and then there's a gentleman that works for me, Derek. He disseminates those and decides whether they go right out to the crew or whether we have an engineering person get involved and kind of take a look at it, so. Uh, anytime we, uh, get a request that talks about a new service to a new building or a, a new home or, you know, whatever, we try to put that into a, a package, a proposal, and get that in front of you all so you can see it. Um, we try to do it prior to them being too excited about getting the power, but sometimes it's hard for us to get the information from those folks. And then, um, you know, once we, once we do get it, we try to put it together pretty quick so you at least have some time to at least hold a council meeting and talk about it and all that, so. Um, on the last page, I guess there's, talks about maintenance and replacement of at least four poles a year. Uh, there was a list, uh, I think when Joe Schmidt had come first initially and talked to you all. Uh, he went and he put together kind of like a, I think a four or five-year sort of straw dog plan. And so we've been kind of peeling stuff off of that. And then from, uh, basically the service requests and things that have just sort of organically happened in the community, we've kind of responded to those, so. And then, as I mentioned, uh, upgrade the system to four, or to 12KV if you so choose, so. We have a, another community that's going through some growth pains right now that, um, they're having trouble because of the size of the line that they have, adding large additional loads, like there's a farm load trying to go in. It's about two and a half megawatts. And then they had a concrete plant that was five megawatts and they couldn't serve the five-megawatt concrete plant. They wanted the service in two years. And it's gonna take us probably five years to get the infrastructure that comes from Duke Energy upgraded to be able to handle that. So one of the things I'm proposing internally is, is that we start to put a one to five-year plan together for communities like you all, um, so that we can kind of know what's in front of you and you can have some feedback to us so that if you know things that are percolating that we don't know about, because normally we just kind of a little bit reactionary because we're service maintenance. But if we knew kind of what the plans of the town were, uh, we might be able to, you know, put some things together to say, okay, from a service perspective, here's our weak points and we need to probably start looking and addressing those. So then in five years, you can actually handle the things that you're thinking about, so. Anyway, I'm open for questions and thoughts and.
I got one or two or three for you.
Okay.
Is there a way to break the, uh, reports down into more of a financial look at them? Um, take for instance, I know when we first started doing this, we had, you know, tons of repairs. Like for instance, in, you know, in 2021, we had a total of 28, where only this year we had seven, which is a great thing obviously. But my, I'm wondering is so that we make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, if we're actually starting to do new construction work with the time and, you know, the finances we're paying, you know, can we start doing more pole replacements or can we start replacing more lines?
Right.
And, you know, doing more good stuff instead of having to do all the repairs that we have been doing?
Right.
Just to make sure we're getting our bang for our buck when people ask, you know, what we're paying, are we really getting what we're paying for, you know?
Yeah, we can put some, I guess, the financial details together and kind of have another get-together and talk about that.
Just to kind of see where we're at throughout the year, maybe at a halfway point or something.
Okay.
I get a percentage, I, I get some of that monthly included with my bill. Um, it goes more into depth each month of what their expenditures are and it lists, um, the equipment or, um, materials that were used and how much that cost. And then deducting that from our account, what's, what's left. So I do get that. I can print that out.
I guess my hope is with the less repairs we're having to make is the more time we can utilize on doing new upgrades to make it better in the long run for everybody.
Yeah, certainly I understand that, yeah.
And to make sure the customers are happy with what they're paying, obviously, so. That's the main thing we have to answer to.
Yeah, and when, uh, when you get your monthly report, uh, does it show kind of maybe where the community is financially and, uh, from the inception to, to the last month or does? Cause I know that I get an internal report of all the communities like that.
Can't remember if the first one of the year has that or the last one of the year. It's one of those, I thought.
Yeah, I think it just kind of gives me a snapshot of where I'm at for that month.
Yeah, we could come back.
I mean, I have no complaints. Everything's been great. I just wanna make sure, you know, we're getting what we're paying for. That's the main goal of the day, so.
Okay.
Um, oh, are you done?
Yeah.
Very sure. I know that we will be working with, um, the, the county is working on putting, um, fiber in different communities in the parks. And I'm not sure how that would affect you guys, um, in the prep of, of getting all of that going.
So is the county, I guess, then attaching fiber to your pole line then or?
Um, I don't know if they're gonna run an antenna or what all they're doing, but I didn't know if you've seen that in other places, if we need to let you know upfront or to keep you involved in that.
Yes, it'd be nice for us to understand kind of what they're trying to do.
Okay.
Um, we have, right now, let's, one, two. We have six, we have 15 dedicated service communities, but out of those 15, we have six that have some pretty major communication infrastructure happening right now. In addition to the grant that I talked about earlier, a lot of the communication companies have got, there's state grants and federal grants that they've been able to acquire. And they're coming in really strongly to a lot of communities and they'll, like, one of them's Brooklyn right now in Thorntown. Those two are kind of standouts. Comms companies are coming in and really kind of going through the whole town. And so, I mean, we have a make-ready of the magnitude of like $700,000 just in one of those communities. Um, and Comcast is coming in, the whole town is gonna work through it. And there's lots of poles that, once they get on them, uh, at least at the date that the pole's in now, those poles are, they'll be considered debacle, so they're not gonna stand with that additional weight on it. So there's a pretty hard infrastructure improvement that's happening in the comm space. Uh, what I was gonna share is we've recently, uh, worked with Frontier in another member community. We have quite a few, uh, contacts there, so if there are Frontiers in your community or other comms in your community, let us know because we, we're now starting to be able to talk to those folks and get things done on their end. I know it's been really challenging.
Did you get much done with Frontier?
I'm sorry.
Do you have much luck with Frontier? Nobody else seems to.
Well, I'm, we're, we're, we're on the surface, so we'll, we'll see, we'll see. But there's one guy that's standing up for, for them and he's saying he's the guy, he can help get stuff done. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna test him on it, so.
Yeah.
Well, perfect you guys coming out and seeing us.
Uh, we have a special request, like moving a, a set of cutouts from one area to another. I mean, do I have to contact you and talk to, or give Lenny and give you tell what we need to do?
Yeah, so, uh, we have an engineer component to me. And what we would do is take that and give that to him and he'd just kind of look at stuff and see, does that make sense? Then we'd come back and say, kind of, yes, it does, or maybe here's why they should stay there, you know? Um, because one of the things they do is, is circuit coordination, uh, to the towns. We don't have one put together yet that I'm aware of for your community. But we have two, the, two communities. One's Knightstown and one's Frankton. And the intention is for us to have that done for each one of our member communities. That way, um, we will be in a coordination scenario so that we don't have, um, errant blowing of fuses because Centerville's in another situation. They have a, a real problem right now. They have a, a location that a fuse is blow, I think it's the west side of town. They'll have other fuses in the center and the east side of town go out. And what's happened is, is over the course of the life of that system, they've just put the wrong kind of fuses in there, wrong sizes, and so it makes a miscoordination, so. But yeah, we'd be happy to entertain any of those requests.
I'll get Lenny to do that because where this is at down to park, fuses are inside a park. And if it's, uh, snow real bad or real muddy, you can't get the trucks back to it. And I'd like to move them out to the main road.
Yeah, we would probably be completely on board with that. Yeah, we would probably be completely on board with that.
Another question is lightning resistors. I know once before I asked about, we need to make a list. I know two or three are out around here, around town. And I know they're blown and we need to make a list and work with you. How soon can we get those checked out and changed and?
Yeah, and those are, I mean, not to say that right now is the last important time for that, but it's now's the time to be repairing them because, well, you know, it seems like thunderstorms happen in the spring and it happened in the fall. So that's when the lightning resistors end up breaking and they're doing their job, so.
Okay, I'll get Lenny, try and get back with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Anything else from the board before we move along?
What is this AMI you keep talking about? What's that stand for?
Automated meter infrastructure. And so basically, it's a, it's a smart meter that, from a radio perspective, it sends information to a system, a collector, and that collector brings it into a core system. And in our case, we use Tanlis. And Tanlis is just a software, they have analytics to it. There are numbers like, or metrics like KDI, SAFI, MAFI. So there's momentary outages, there's sustained outages, and there's collective kind of outages, and there's intermediate outages.
So this is a communication from a meter to you guys is constant?
And you would also, you would also have the ability to read the electric meters from the office, to turn them off from the office. You would have all of that as well, ability. So you wouldn't have to physically send someone to that address to turn the meter off either. You could turn, you could literally hit a button on the computer and it turns that meter off.
Basically, like if that meter lost power, they would get a red flag on their computer screen if there's an outage or somebody pulled the meter physically that shouldn't be in your face.
And since we have somebody monitoring that 24/7, so let's say it happens at 3 o'clock in the morning, we would see it pop up red back at the, at the command center. And the customer may not even know that they're out of power and we'll be rolling a truck because that outage can cause it, so.
And we have a couple, well, we have two communities that they ask us, they say, if that happens, wait five minutes, because if it comes back on, we don't want to roll the truck. But after that five minutes, we literally roll a truck. And so we get a pretty good response time from them just because we, we know, you know, that something's wrong. Now, we do have occasions where mainly during the day, it's happened, it's happened on the weekend, where all of a sudden we'll get a red meter. And so we'll call the community and they'll say, oh, yeah, we're over there working on it. Or they'll say, well, I don't know, let me go look. And then they find somebody's, you know, working on their house or they've hired Cousin Bob to kind of do something and he's decided they're going to take the meter off. And then the town's like, oh, no, now you owe us some money. So anyway, there's lots of, we have a lot of fun with it, but we know sometime, you know, some communities ever have an investment in the metering systems that they have. They want to get that, you know, at least get it to the end of the life and then maybe look at something else later.
Okay. All right, anything else for these guys before we turn over to water?
I just have one question with, so you guys brought up the fiber coming into town. Do you have a pole attachment that you charge companies? Okay, I just want to make sure that was looked at and that was taken, because we do have a few members that don't. And so we want to make sure you guys are protected, especially it helps save and helps, helps pay for some new poles if we need them. So make sure that that's covered as well. Good deal.
Good. Thanks for giving us a couple of minutes.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good, safe drive back home.
Thanks.
See you later.
All right, Thomas Barkley from Commonwealth Engineers. What kind of great news have you brought to us?
So did Lenny give you guys all the bid packet or the bid information in your packet? If not, Julie, I can send it to you to share with everyone.
This is all I got was for the SCADA.
No.
Okay.
So let me pull it up real quick. Mike and his team are, have got us squared away for getting all of our advertisements in place so that we can go out to bid. Sorry, he was actually just calling me. And that schedule will look like this. Advertisements will go into the paper on July 17th and July 24th. And I'll send this all to you so you have it as well. And we will have our pre-construction meeting on July 31st. And then bids are due by August 14th at 3:00.
What?
For the Oka Project.
Water plant.
Yeah.
This is the little grant.
Yep, the small one. So this includes the SCADA system, the two wells, installation, oh, it's the SCADA system. Yep, meters.
SCADA's the communication device.
Yep.
That's what that, you know, was to be shown.
And there's the hydrants and valves.
Yeah, that's the information that you're seeing on the SCADA system that, you know, it's going to be Lenny's, Lenny's lifeblood over there, so. Yeah, that's all set. Pre-bid, like I said, pre-bid 10 a.m.
Pre-construction, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, pre-construction, 10 a.m. on the 31st.
Okay, here?
Yep.
Okay.
Everything will be here.
Okay. July 17th and 24th for the ads. Have those been sent to Western Wayne? Because I have already, I tried to send them something and they told me that they are short-staffed and I can't get anything into them until after the 31st. So if he has not done that yet, then he'll need to go to.
I'm seeing a July 1st, 2024. I've got an email from him to Western Wayne saying that those need to be around on those two dates. And then send the publisher's affidavit to you.
Okay.
That's an email from them to the paper?
This is an email from Mike to the paper.
Okay, that may be.
He needs to verify that.
I think their deadline is that prior Friday for anything in July.
Okay, I'll verify that.
If, if need, if it's something that has to be advertised, we may just have to eat crow and go with palladium item.
Let me get confirmation on that from him. He's, he's in Dollywood right now with his kids, so. He did just try to call me, so I know he's at his phone, but yeah.
Julie's eating crow because I'm a vegetarian.
Fair enough. And then, so that's on that side. On the USDA side, Nathan, I need to get you set up. I'll send, I won't send you an email. You'll get an email from USDA, it'll be from their e-verification. It doesn't take a long time. Basically, I'll put all your information in, but then you have to go on and you have to become what's called Level 2 certified in order to submit the application on behalf of the town. What it's going to do, it's going to ask you, if you've ever done one of those, proof of your, your identity, it's going to say, answer these four questions. Which one of these phone numbers are you affiliated with? Which one of these addresses are you affiliated with, which, you know?
Sure, prove you're not a robot.
Yep, and also prove that, you know, it's vague enough that, you know, somebody couldn't just guess their way through it, but specific enough to go on, you'll recognize, you know? Like it asked me about my college address, which nobody would, nobody would know, but yeah. So there's things like that, so.
Easy enough.
Yep, so you'll, you'll see that come through in the next couple of days. Just once you get that verification, just send that to me and Julie so that when I complete the application, you'll just come in here and you'll click. Actually, Julie can do most of it for you, you'll just, you.
Bruce had to do that.
You have to click submit, that's, that's all that's required of you, so.
Piece cake.
Yep.
Easier said than done, yeah.
Yep. So that's what I have, let me text Mike and once I get an email or answer back from him on when he submitted that.
The cost is outrageously high. I mean, it's the difference between $112 and $1,000 for ads.
Yeah.
Can I post it on their Facebook page from the newspaper? Does that count?
No.
I guess.
We're on public TV, I'm just going to keep my opinion to myself.
Did they have their meeting last night?
Mm-hmm.
Did they sign that?
I left it with them, so.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Or you want us to keep on trucking?
I think I'm good. I'll just update you as soon as I hear from Mike. I'll just, when I see a gap, I'll just jump in, give you that update.
Cool. All right, we're going to go into reports. This lease report, it's pretty hefty this month.
Oh, wait on.
You skipped over.
We skipped over, yeah, we skipped over because we had people, the unsafe building.
Oh, I thought people were going to be here.
No.
They were invited.
They were invited, so.
Without them, you need to affirm the action of declaring an unsafe building.
Okay.
On three each situation.
I just thought we were looking for speakers.
Yep.
Okay.
I thought the lady was supposed to be here about the unsafe buildings. She didn't come last, but didn't, didn't have the.
From forward, Wayne County.
Oh, no, we were, we were going to have that so she could go over everything. Bob was able to speak to her and the county attorney and get everything that he needed to be able to make sure that we were on board and have everything the way it's supposed to be, so we canceled that.
So we don't need to meet with her anymore?
No.
Okay.
Did the lady up here on North Johnson?
No, who did, Brett's sister?
Yes.
No, I did not hear from her. I got a message from Shaila that she was going to try to call, but I hadn't heard from her. So in fact, well, and we heard from the brother who said, even though he was living there, he didn't own it. Well, there's actually, it's still in their parents' name and both parents are still deceased. We're talking about 225 North Johnson Street.
Yes.
And so we had sent it to the son who was living there as the occupant. And so it's on, I don't think there's any reason not to proceed with affirming your unsafe building order at this meeting, so.
Okay.
So is taxes being paid? Do we know that yet?
They have stopped, they haven't been paid pretty much since.
Since last year, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got two properties in question in that.
Actually, three.
Three. 1765 Spring, 225 North Johnson, and 285 South State.
Yep.
Who's in charge of Joe's place up there, from Spring Street?
There is no one in charge of it. The utilities have been disconnected after they both passed away. Taxes are no longer being paid on it for, I think, two years. It's getting ready.
Nothing has ruined anything yet.
Yep, and there's been no transfer, there's been no state open for either one. And so that was one that we put in the newspaper just saying, hey, speak now forever, hold your peace to anyone who might claim an interest in that property. And so it's been properly published two times. And that's one that's on the agenda for tonight for 1765 Spring Street. And absent any change, I would recommend that this board just affirm, you may recall that the first declaration of it being an unsafe building is made by Lenny as your public super president. And then this board can, when you, if it's for a total destruction of a building, which this is, that's the remedy, you have to set a hearing to give people a chance to come here. Then this board either can reject Lenny's recommendation, affirm it, or amend it. And absent anybody coming, absent any change in conditions, I'd recommend that you affirm that a declaration that 1765 Spring Street is an unsafe building and that the remedy is for a total removal.
You're going to do each one separate?
Yeah, let's do each one separate. Is there a motion for that?
All right, everybody clear on that without having to repeat everything?
You want one to spring?
You want a motion?
We're going to do it individually.
You want a motion to turn it down 1765?
To affirm the unsafe building order that includes.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
There you go, motion, the second and the third, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion passes on 1765. So next up is, yes, sir.
Okay, Mike said he got it in before the July 1 deadline.
Before the July.
But he said he will have his admin confirm that tomorrow and send me any documentation and I'll get that to the board to confirm that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Have a safe trip.
Thanks.
All right, next up is 225 North Johnson. And we still have not had total confirmation that they have acknowledged. Is that what I heard?
Well, they've gotten their notice, the son that lives there. So I think it's safe to say they've gotten the notice and we have presented that.
It was a certified letter, is that what it was?
Yep, to, yep, to a family member. Now I'm not getting an agreement, well, it was, I think it was handling.
Yeah, he handed it back to us, but he, Lenny gave it to him and gave us the number to his sister. And I gave her your number and I gave her some general description of how the process goes. She seemed to be okay with all of it. Some of her question was more what they get to do with it after, after we paid to tear it down. I don't think she understood that there would be a lien against this property that would have to be taken care of.
Nothing ever is paid for, they can remain owner and sell it as a lot or whatever.
Okay, I think that was, that was what she was.
I'll try her again tomorrow.
Okay.
What happens with the personal contents inside is that they got time to get it out and it's gone at that point, basically?
Yeah, that's what we usually will give.
And they're clear on that, is my question.
You would, you would solicit bids for the tear down, go with whoever you think is most responsible and responsive bidder to tear it down. And then we'd give notice to owners to remove any of the personal property inside.
So when we have this public hearing, can they deny it in any way?
That's what tonight was for.
Okay, so after this, everything's moving forward.
Yep, the next thing would be if they, you're confirming the order. Now, the order gives them 60 days to tear it down on their own. It's at that point, if they don't, then you guys have the ability to order to do yourself.
Okay, so we need a motion for 225 North Johnson.
Right, to affirm.
To affirm an unsafe building and recommend demolition?
Require, the order itself requires that. So in your affirming the order, you're saying that, basically.
Okay, Bree's making a motion on 225 Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second her.
Okay, you got a motion, the second, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now it leaves us with 285 South State that's been a topic of conversation forever.
Ever and ever. And this one, I'm really thrown a bit with the county. The county quote bought it at their own tax sale. And, but if you have ever been to a tax sale, it is, you first, you, you, you quote, say that you're the successful bidder on that and it gives the time for any real owner to come in and redeem it. If they don't redeem it, then you go back and ask for a deed. Well, the county decided they really don't want it, even they bought it at the sale, so they're never requesting for the deed. That's why we can't find, that's why I couldn't find a deed to the county. Even though they were the successful bidder, they decided, no, we don't want it. There's too much problems. That town of Dublin's causing problems over there on that. So they didn't, so they don't own it. So I thought that the safest way, since they have a quote significant interest in the building and since we were never able to really get good service on the local person, that we went ahead and published that in the paper as well. So now it's been properly published in the paper twice, given a chance for anybody who might claim, whether it be the county commissioners or anybody else that wanted to show up tonight's hearing, could have come. They're not here, so I just want us to, once again, I think this is the third time, you are affirming the unsafe building order for 285 State Street. Now, that one is on the top of our list as far as what we're submitting to the BLIT program. And because the county did have at least a significant interest in it, I'm hoping that they give us good leeway and put us at the top of the list for the BLIT program.
Okay, who will own that property after it's all done? Is the town going to end up with the property? Or is the county going to continue to hold the property?
If the, if they end, if their BLIT program ends up paying for it, they would probably be coming to the owner. If we're not successful in the BLIT program, we have to do the tear down ourselves, put a lien on it, and then it goes back up for sale. We could then become the owner at that time. But we're hopeful that the BLIT program will be the ones providing the funds, which in turn would put the property back into their name.
All three of these addresses have been included into the BLIT program. Because we only have three, they didn't see a problem. Because some people, you sometimes have a lot.
Yeah.
Because we only had three, they felt like we, we should be able to have all three of them in. But definitely this one.
What kind of timeframe we're looking at for this? Does anybody have any idea? Is this going to happen this year yet?
Somebody talked with her yesterday, said 60 days, 30 to 60 days is what they said they would sign.
Yeah, because the.
What properties get applied by.
Yeah, because the applications, we had to.
You submitted.
Yeah, we had to submit by July 1 and then they go through all the properties and verify everything. And I think that was the 60 days that you're talking about, going through everything.
Yep.
And then, once that is proven, then it's a matter of putting out to bid and, and all of that.
So there's a chance this could be done before the summers are over? So, there's a chance this could be done before the summers are over, the year's over?
There's a chance, yeah.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah. And I will, I, what I will do after tonight's affirmation that you're gonna do on all three properties, create a recordable order that we then record so the world knows that you have now affirmed what Lenny's initial order said. And then, I'm gonna submit that to them too, just to supplement their file.
So, all three properties, if they go through the BLIT, will belong to the county then?
This is a new program for them, but I'm assuming that if they are the ones that pay for it, they would end up being the title for it. I don't see how we would ever have title and ownership if we don't have to spend any money on it.
Okay.
Well, to jump to gun, I'll make a motion to affirm the order for the condemnation. The unsafe building order. Unsafe building orders for two eighty-five State Street.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, so.
Neighbors will be happy.
All three properties hopefully can take care of soon.
At least progressing on them, please.
Okay, very good. All right, police reports. One nine-one-one hang up, two abandoned vehicles, seven animal problems, three business checks, two civil disputes, two community policing, one domestic that was physical, two drug calls, one, I assume probably a funeral escort, one fall, one harassment, one investigate of theft, one, or just four general investigations. One was a vehicle accident that involved injuries, had a shoplifting, it was involving a juvenile at the mini mart. Had seven speak with officers, had two special patrols, had one suspicious person, four suspicious vehicles, seven traffic stops, two vehicle lockouts, and a vehicle identification number checked, giving us a total of fifty-four calls for the month of June. Fire report, sir?
June twenty-four, ALS zero, BLS one thirty-seven runs, nine-on-one with Reed two. Fire runs, we had two illegal burns in town, one vehicle accident and one wired down. Strong one vehicle fire we assisted on and Cambridge City one structure fire we assisted on. And we used twenty-seven hundred gallon of water for training.
All right, any questions?
Do you have a copy of this? Thank you.
I put this paper back here on this.
Lenny is not here tonight. We do have a job opening. Mike Smith no longer is employed by the town, he resigned. So, Lenny needs a full-time worker and they work from seven to three-thirty, is that correct? Monday through Friday. He also is looking for temporary help at his discretion, but the, the other full-time employees, what's gonna be the main topic of conversation to try and get that position filled soon. So, you can turn in applications here at the town hall. I think you've got five currently, is that what I heard?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Application and a job description is also on our website at dublinin.org. And Lenny has some available you can pick up or you're welcome to come pick them up here at the town hall.
I guess my next question would be for the board and maybe just in past practice, how we would like to hire this person? Would we like to have the whole board do interviews? Would we like to just leave it up to the personnel committee? How would we like to move forward so that we can stay progressive on this?
I would think to do it, I would think to do it through Lenny, he's the only guy to live with the guy. Try to get something done, at least let him do the talking or have the biggest decision in where he wants to or not, or he can use him.
Who's on personnel?
I don't remember off the top of my head, honestly.
I think at this point, I'm giving the applications, a copy of them to Lenny to go through and, and he's discussing with them and verifying some of the information that they're giving and kinda compiling his recommendations. Do I have a copy of it in here? Maybe I don't. I do not. It's been a long time since we've, that's been seven months since we've discussed that. Who is what we're running how?
It's okay, I just.
I can, I can send that out who's, who's, so that you guys are aware. I've got a lot of different stuff, that is not one of them. So, do you, are you okay with him filtering through?
Yes.
And then, he can bring recommendations of like the top three or four or five or whatever. And then, you guys can sit down and we can schedule interviews with you and Lenny. I think the last time that, that worked out so that if, you know, being new, you might think of a question that he doesn't think to ask or vice versa. But we will.
So, I guess a question, does the whole board want to do the interview and we just wanna leave it up to personnel committees?
I don't need to do the interviewing, but I will if needed.
I mean, I wanna get this thing moving as quick as possible, cuz there's a lot of things that he, legality wise can't do because not have a second person. Like, take for instance, using the bucket truck, you can't do anything with the bucket truck till he has a second person.
And on that, I know things don't move as fast as anybody wants. Can he hire any, not a temp agency, like a staffing agency? Just to help with some mowing or little stuff to keep up in the interim?
He's got a couple, well, we have one temporary person now, but this is his last week and then he's taking on a daytime job. But I do have another temporary person that he works third shift and he said he could work, you know, fifteen to twenty hours a week, whatever it is we need during this. So, Lenny has felt that he's real reliable. And that, so we are looking at that here very soon. He came and picked up an application too.
And my other question for Julie was if, how we have to publicize this position? Obviously, the newspaper is not gonna be helpful with this situation. So, it has been publicized on the Facebook world, it hasn't been publicized on the website. Obviously, word of mouth, it gets out pretty good around town, so I don't know of any other, other ways.
Did you send a reach alert?
No, I just did on the community art thing, but I couldn't send out a reach alert.
I guess how much time do we want to give the process before we actually start the interview? And basically, the final day, when do we wanna, you know, do the hire?
I would think it's in each people. Says he's got somebody he feels is adequate.
But giving people, telling people they have until.
You have to set a date.
Yes.
An application has to be turned in by.
Such and such a date.
I mean, I would personally like to start doing interviews next Monday.
If three or more of you meet with them in an interview, then it's actually a public meeting. Well, it's a formalized meeting. You can meet in executive session, but you have to get notice at executive session. So, if at all possible, I suggest personnel committee, two of us, you don't wanna meet formally, it's a meeting.
Yes. That'd be good. So, application by the twelfth?
Application's turned in by the nineteenth?
We can still do it by the nineteenth, even though you're wanting to start doing, you're wanting to start interviewing when?
I would just like to start next week if we've got some already better.
I mean, we can go ahead and start with the ones that we have, but still continue for another week or so.
Yeah, I like the nineteenth, yeah.
Well, I think just leave the application process open and not put a deadline or stop date on it.
I thought you had to. I mean, you can always accept resumes if we're not hiring, we're not hiring, but it would be nice to have a.
Backup.
Yeah. But people procrastinate, procrastinate.
You don't give them a day.
It would be nice, we can give it, we can still take after that time, but it kinda says, you know, we're gonna get serious and we're gonna start interviewing. So, if you really want a job, then you need to have it in by this date. But we always accept, you know, people wanna drop off, ask for an application or drop off a resume, we do accept.
As far as your payroll, what would be, what's like your next payroll period where your start date is? So, it would be easy for you on the books.
Payroll starts on Saturday, so for them to start on Monday.
So, if we potentially could hire a person to start the twenty-ninth?
Sure.
That sound okay with everybody?
Can't get anybody to quit. So, I'm glad he's helping aggressive model of a girl.
That's about, you know, between the testing and, and mowing, that's, that's about what he's getting done. He did spray the sidewalks and stuff, also got down to Mount Auburn and that. So, that's just about all he's been able to.
So, I guess I would like to say, you know, we tell somebody on the twenty-fifth that you've got the job and then you can start on the twenty-ninth.
What if they have to give a two-week notice?
Yeah.
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 And that is a possibility.
And, you know, I mean, we would like to have a one to two-week notice. So, if their employer comes back and says, thank you for the notice, you can leave. And that happens sometimes, but.
I mean, I guess we could give them the availability to start the twenty-ninth, but if they can't, we could understand if they do have that. I mean, that's a common courtesy that I would appreciate.
Yes.
So, you wanna quit taking applications or have to?
We're just gonna say the deadline is July nineteenth. Applications need to be turned in by the nineteenth. With a potential start date of the twenty-ninth.
So, I guess if you're doing it that way, if he has any potential ones out of the five right now, you can get, get them in as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'll let him know, you let him know?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I won't be available until about Monday.
But if he's gonna pre-screen?
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll have to do the, the pre-screening as far as drug testing and so forth before the start date. So, you know, we come up with a decision like on the twenty-fifth, that gives time to make that stuff happen, background checks and so forth.
My question is, I understand wanting someone within fifteen minutes. Is that a requirement or just a?
Well, a lot of that was for when we had the electrical issues, well, not issues, but we had the full, full electrical department. I just kinda went with it. Nowadays, it's not such a big deal and with Lenny living next door to the city building.
Well, that's why I thought you might wanna either up that or take that. That just really limits your candidate pool. Or even if you wanna say thirty minutes, at least that gives you Richmond, Newcastle, Coorsville.
Well, quite honestly, has anybody really discredited that?
I haven't had to. I mean, the only.
Well, I mean, some people might not, I wouldn't even apply if I saw that.
Yeah, cuz I can't make it. I have, I, I received an application today from somebody that lives between here and Newcastle, but it's considered a Newcastle address. So, knowing that he probably didn't see this, he just heard that we were hiring. So, it might not be a bad idea to change to at least, what, thirty minutes? That's reasonable. I mean, I don't want somebody an hour away and, you know, we have a main breaker going.
Sure, I think thirty's reasonable.
Because what we do, they really need a GDD or a hospital department to mow grass, all structures.
Well, they've applied for the waterworks.
They have to.
Well, I told them why, I mean, Rudy does waterworks, not in there, we need somebody to help Lenny.
But this is going to be the second in command. If Lenny's not here, this person will have to have their, their certifications. Nick would be doing his, once Lenny got his, all of his, Nick would be working on his. So, at least two people should have all of those certifications so if something happens. And, you know, if he's in the hospital for a long time, whatever, you know, you never know what, what could happen. You have somebody else that is certified. Temporary, no, the temporary person does not need that, but.
What's the, what's his base scale?
The temporary.
For Nick.
For Nick. He left at eighteen thirty-six.
Personally, I don't see any need to raise it myself, but.
Based on, you know, that, at least ninety days.
Probation, yeah.
Probation and then, you know, see how they do and see if you want to bump anything up from there or wait until they, you know, for one year and, and see if they're, you know, gonna want to. Cuz we've had that before where we hired somebody and then they decided they didn't want to take the water exam. It was too much. So, they need to fill us out as much as we need to fill them out.
Anything else look good on there?
That sounds good.
Keep it right well. Wanna give any updates on his SCADA? Do you know anything to report on that?
You probably know more about that than I do, Rex.
Oh, well, the only thing I've read about, you know, it's more.
We need to talk about, I guess.
More computerized. I mean, they, what they do now, they use their phones and tablets and stuff to make it work, which, you know, I'm, I like to scatter as far as keeping up with, you know, the alarm system and stuff, but I've heard too many stories about, you know, being hacked and had problems that way. But, I mean, that's something down the road that we can talk to and stuff like that, but.
I don't know that, and you have anything out there that does not have that capability?
Yeah, after now, all it does is just alarm system calls and stuff, that's all it does. You know, but I mean.
No action needs to be taken tonight then?
No, not really.
No, this is what, he is recommending that to be included in the bid packet is, this was the, I think, the.
I guess I thought that.
Is this something's gonna be tied to the internet?
It can be, yes.
Well, I don't, I don't think we need to be tied to the internet.
Well, that's what I'm wondering about. I mean, as far as the alarm system.
Reason for us to have anything that doesn't, that goes outside the city limits. And the only person that needs to be alarmed is Lenny.
Yeah.
And he can, you know, he can do what needs to be done from that point on.
The worker, Lenny, workers in the board, you know, president gets notified. That's what it is right now. And then, I get notified too, but I just.
This hacking thing has become a.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. So, it's something we need.
I don't see any reason for us to be tied to the internet so it can be hacked.
Right, but I don't know how the system works not using the internet because the phone systems don't work very good. And I don't, that's what we have to find out more about.
Yeah, cuz the system we have is no longer.
It's not reliable.
It's not reliable.
No.
So, we have to do something different when we, we do the new system. So, we just, you know, I think this was the, maybe the lower end that didn't have all the bells and whistles and things with it that Lenny felt comfortable that he could utilize. So, we just need to see if it is something that can be done without internet access.
I don't wanna speak for Lenny, but I'm going to assume this is probably the basic version, which tells you when there's a problem. It's not such a thing where he can turn pumps on and off with his phone, like some of the higher-end models.
Like, say, no, they don't.
They says you can do that in here.
It can be updated.
You can set your times, turn pumps on and off, you can do this and that and, I mean, stuff like that we have to work with, but yeah. But I agree, I don't like to out-turn any open where it can be hacked, so we can keep it contained.
And that's what worried me too with some of the AMI meters too, they were talking about tonight. I mean, it's basically the same idea, so.
Oh, yeah. And we're not a big city to need all that stuff. And we're not a big city to need all that stuff. I mean, we're small enough where a guy can go check something, you know, in 15, 20 minutes. It's just an hour or so away, so.
Okay, uh, Lenny finally had Cooley come to town and they did the inspection of the drain over on Ronnie Sutherland's garage area that we talked about a lot on, uh, is it Schofield Alley or East Harrison?
It's considered West Harrison, this is the west, what you have.
So they basically said that there's no issues on our end, um, all that water comes from the county's field?
Well, the only issue he found is that when the sewer came in in 1990, they went to there and broke out the old drain and they repaired it with a smaller drain. So, uh, I don't know, we might have to go in there later on and, and work it, that's the only problem he found. And then we got a, a flash drive video of it, so we want, if somebody wants to check it out, they can get that way. I looked at it and stuff, you can see where it comes down and there's water standing in that old pipe and stuff that way.
But it's not clogged in the water?
Yeah, not clogged.
No, he was talking about replacing that back with a, with an eight inch area and then putting, what is it, floating fill in there to kind of hold that up? Because that area is sinking, so set it up so that you have a good even flow going through there and that should resolve everything. So that, that is his plan, but as far...
How long a stretch of pipe are we talking, just a short piece?
Uh, I don't know how long this is here.
It's sort of like through, seven, six feet.
Well, that's total.
Well, that's, that's total, that's not, um...
Turn the whole pipe, just change it.
Right, yeah, right.
Just fix the, take the plastic out and put it back to the original size.
Oh, okay.
So I think you'd need an eight to 10 foot section there that might have been gutted out.
And you got the impression Lenny was going to do that on?
Yes.
Town?
Yes.
Okay, we can, we can do that, but I'd like to pay Cooley to do it.
We can do that ourselves.
And you know what results come out of him talking to Brower's about getting the park, um, beautification situation around the drinking fountain for the donation we got?
No.
Doll family or Mills family? I did see where he talked to him, so I just didn't know what kind of...
Uh, no, he did not mention that to me.
All right, I guess we'll turn it over to you as the clerk, as Lenny is not here to defend himself.
Yeah. Um, did, Bob, did you get the email for the Creating Places patronicity?
I mean, I was planning on sending the wording to the meeting.
Okay. And so this is the change that you want?
And on that section, just as a...
Okay. They were...
They probably say no, but...
Well, she said that they didn't have a problem, they would look into it. So send the changes that we wanted to them and, uh, she would get it submitted to their attorneys and see if they can get it put in there.
They should know, all, all we're doing is asking for the same thing.
Right.
And this is, we're holding them harmless for anything that we do wrong per the agreement. And this says that they'll hold us harmless for anything they do wrong.
Right. So I will submit that to her and, uh, see if we can get that approved so that we can submit our, um, release of funds agreement. Because we're, that's what we're holding on is getting our money. Whoops, this goes without two.
We already pre-approved that as long as they accept...
Yes, it's, it's, yeah. As long as, um, Bob was okay with...
And even if they don't, it's unlikely they're going to do anything wrong, but you never know. I don't want to hold up your money.
No, yeah. It's okay. You have my, uh, just regular reports and then the rest of it I will, I will turn back over to Nathan.
Um, you did get the fuel card back correctly from our resigned employee?
I have all the keys, um, Lenny verified, um, the keys that I had, um, that that's what he had plus the fuel card, yes.
So everything's accounted for?
Yes.
Great. Do these, each particular card have a PIN with them?
Yes.
Does that PIN need to change or update?
Um, each, there's different cards. So I will, I have other cards that for the next employee, there will be a different card. And I will close that card out.
Perfect.
Or have closed that card out, we'll put it that way.
Gotcha. All right, a few weeks ago or so, I sent everybody a picture of the mural design that would potentially go on the side of the skating rink. And tonight we need to officially approve that. The paint will start being applied July the 20th. That's coming up in a couple of Saturdays, um, from 11 to 5 is the ideal time. If it doesn't get completed in that, they're going to shoot for it the next day, Sunday, also from 11 to 5. But hopefully, if we get enough volunteers, it'll all get done in one day. Um, so what we need to do tonight is to approve of that design that I sent you digitally on your phones.
Bring it back up to remember.
How about this?
I'm shooting, I'm trying to have a look.
Design.
So to give you a little bit of a quick background on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve that mural design.
I'll second. I don't have the, uh, website saved. But anyway, this particular artist, you'll see in all, basically almost every painting she does, she has that astronaut in it. And, uh, I forget the exact story, you can find it better on the internet. But, uh, it was a astronaut that actually went on the moon and his last name was Bean. And, uh, so she, uh, just enjoys having an artist that actually went on the moon. So she likes to, uh, basically recognize him in each painting that she does. So with this one, she's got him like in roller skates, skating out of this world, basically is what it kind of looks like, so. That's, uh, that's where the astronaut, uh, idea comes from. So basically what would happen would be like on Thursday or Friday, um, she would come in herself and like stencil the side of the wall and do like, say, this is block four, this is block six. And we'll give like a list that the color goes with this block. So when everybody comes on Saturday, basically they've got like a color by number match situation, basically. So any kid that's, you know, ideally able to stand up on their own, can hold a paintbrush, can do this. Um, so Marilyn Shunk, um, has donated, I believe it's 40 pounds of snow cones for that day. Uh, the fire department's going to do what we're going to call a sprinkle to kids, so...
Wish the law office is about right.
So I'm telling everybody is they bring their kids to have swimwear underneath of their clothes. So when they get wet, they'll, uh, be good to go with that. And, um, we don't have any basically big food donated, but if somebody wants to donate snacks like bags of chips and Little Debbie's, things like that, that would all be great. But hopefully, uh, the idea is to get all the community members that are going to participate to email ahead of time so we kind of get a head count, how many people will be there and things like that can be better, better figured out. And hopefully the weather cooperates, that's going to be the other big thing.
And we'll say, this, this is a, a community painting. So this is, anybody can volunteer, you don't have to be someone in Dublin, Western Wayne, any, anybody in the area that's interested. Have kids that are interested in art, bring them. And we need, you said we needed ladders?
Yeah, if somebody's got like a step ladder they can bring as well, that would be nice. Uh, because the building is, I don't know, like 10 feet high. There are some places that are going to need a little bit extra steps, so, especially if you've got a teenager or something that needs a little extra reach. But there will be, uh, obviously waivers and stuff there to sign the day of, so all that legality stuff will be covered. But, uh, yeah, it should be a really cool deal. Uh, and my plan is too, is to have some type of a sheet or form or something, because we've talked, uh, in a previous board, um, about getting some of our hydrants around town painted. And with having all the folks here that do that kind of stuff at our disposal, I'd like to get maybe their information, see if they're interested. And when we actually do pull the trigger on the hydrant painting to have their contact information. So it'd be a lot easier to make it happen, so. And I kind of, kind of been putting us on hold till we find out what actual hydrants get replaced in this water grant we're dealing with, so we're not kind of wasting our time or energy on something that gets removed. So tonight we just need to formally approve the, uh, the actual picture so that she can purchase the paint and have the colors necessary and be good for the 20th.
I'll make a motion, make a second.
We already did.
Oh, you already did?
We already did.
The motion is second, we just have a...
I have Bree made a motion and Danny seconded.
Oh, okay.
I need, I need everybody to say aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. I forget where she's from, I want to say Noblesville, uh, her name's Joy, uh, we're going to get gal, we've met her, she kind of looked at the building already and so forth, measured it out, so. Uh, I did talk to Lenny and make sure he's reminded again that takes care of the couple of spots.
He went and got the paint today.
Okay.
Now, where that goes from now, if there's somebody that wants to volunteer to do that, um, you know, have at it.
But there, there's a couple of spots that got to be passion filled up, so we don't have cracking, breaking and stuff, so. Uh, they did get the north building done, so it's ready to be...
Have we heard?
That guy is, uh, last I talked to him, he said he was waiting on the check to clear that the county sent him and he'll probably be starting anytime, so. I'm assuming he probably didn't want to go out and buy a thousand dollars worth of paint if that check was no good, so. Uh, but I'd say we'll probably see him anytime. He told me when it had to be done by, we'll do that real quick. Okay, so July the 10th is the first day he can start on it, so. That's tomorrow, so. And he's got to be done by August 31st.
He might not be done tomorrow, right?
So, we might see him any day pop up. He is doing a big, uh, thing for 9/11, too, out in New York. He's doing a, like a Statue of Liberty, so he's kind of been busy with that. Pretty, pretty popular with that, so. I bet we'll see him soon. So do we need to do any more with the release of funds for the patronicity or we're good?
No, we're good with that one.
We had some personnel policy changes with, uh...
Grab one.
Adding shorts.
This is my verbiage based on my understanding of what you guys wanted, so feel free to tweak it however you want. This will show up in section four, chapter A.
Chapter two.
Seven, everybody got one? You'll see, it's underlined and highlighted in section seven under dress code. Um, the new language is what is showed where I say, because initially it says they must wear long pants at all times while on duty, no shorts, but then I put, provided during the summer months of June, July and August, employees may wear shorts unless the shorts replace the employee in an unsafe condition based on their projected work duties for the day. Was that kind of what you had in mind?
That sounds good.
And I, I just picked those months, I mean, we could say at any time, but I thought...
I mean, that's the thing with the Indiana weather now, it's still, you know, it can be 70, 80 in November. I don't know that I personally would specify months, I would just kind of leave out more...
Summer just, summer months.
Well, if you say summer months, then that, that could be unclear.
That's why that...
That could be opened up to, which it should be.
I would say maybe just during hot weather, maybe Vegas that.
Well, then who's going to, who's going to define as hot weather? Your hot may not be the same as my hot.
Some people wear shorts year round.
Yeah, they do.
I don't, I don't say the shorts is a problem for me at, at any time, as long as, you know, other than...
If you're going to weed, then they need to bring a pair of pants. And I think the guys had always done that in the past, they kept a pair of pants in the locker.
So you want to just strike all of that whole during the summer months of June, July and August? So it says, provided employees may wear shorts unless the shorts replace you. Oh, that's kind of, I mean, then that really is contradictory to where it says they'll wear long pants at all times. This was more of an exception. And if you say they can wear them at any time, as long as it's safe, we maybe need to kind of reword that whole part.
Must wear clothes all times.
Would it be better to say they must wear proper attire at all times? And that way, that, that leaves them open to wear whatever they want to, as long as they've got protection, like say when the weed...
That would be real wide open, it's subjective and just strike that whole thing about wearing long pants.
Say they must wear...
Just use common sense.
Must wear clothes appropriate to the job you're doing at that particular day.
That makes sense.
See, I don't care what they wear, as long as they get the job done.
Can you word that out again, Bob?
If I, I, I'm hearing a couple of different...
I think Shane's got about the best answer.
Must wear attire.
Proper attire.
Proper attire, as long as they're...
Right to the job you're doing.
Well, then does, then would we even strike out about defined as any employee other than those working in the clerk's office? Or do you still want that? Because you would want the clerk's office to be wearing proper attire too, but...
She doesn't have any employees either.
That's true.
Not today.
And they, they don't need PPE?
No.
So I suppose we keep that, because it is for service employees. So all service employees must wear appropriate clothing at all times to remain in a safe condition or something.
Something along that line. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
Still working on getting quotes for the new park sign we've been talking about.
I heard a rumor where, uh, the high school softball organization is going to have to have a, start playing at their own facilities. So if we do that and they make a diamond like them, milk makes yellow diamond, uh, do we still want a sign like that? Are we going to change our sign that's...
I mean, we can, we can change ours, because the way I have it now is, um, Town of Dublin's Wilson Parks, thanks for visiting, come again soon. Home of Western Wayne and Lincoln High School Girls Softball League. So I can, I can just put Western Wayne Girl Softball.
Okay, we just need to make sure that's what they're going to do, by the way, when they're going to do it.
I don't think I have money to build a diamond, so.
I, I don't know, but I, just a new rule there, I heard that they can't have tournaments. I heard the new turn, uh, rule for the high school, they can't have current softball tournament. And other people probably have to be on our facility.
So we just can't host a tournament?
Yeah, we can't host a tournament, so. By the time they get it done though, the sign...
But they still play their normal schedule.
Right.
Yeah, for the girls' softball, I don't, I just want to say, Bob, we'll make sure we don't put all, I mean, they change their mind and go somewhere else, you know? But we don't, we, we was, you know, home.
Well, I mean, technically, Western Wayne Girl Softball League is what is ours. We leased that out to them, but it's not really their, it's the temporary home, I guess. But it's, you know...
They always said it was home in high school.
Well, I can't just play on the diamonds, the boys play on the milk, if they got...
It doesn't work that way, I don't want it.
Up to spend a lot of money if they don't have it.
Here you go.
Probably some type of a size requirement.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I would say if you just make it home of Western Wayne Girl Softball, that would be just plain simple.
Okay.
That covers everybody.
Yep. And then, um, working on...
A local picture.
A local picture. Um, I talked to the gentleman that's doing our foreign place and he told me to get some pictures, different angles. And then he'll have his engineer team try to...
Photoshop it.
Get, get me, um, what it should look like when it's done. And then my recommendation, well, what...
Well, I kind of like instead of Town of, like a welcome to Dublin's Wilson Park. I think that sounds better.
Welcome to Dublin's Wilson Park, okay.
Just me anyway.
Yeah. Okay. And, um, it's looking something similar to what the Gospel Missions sign is down here on the corner, on a bigger scale, but with the vinyl posts. Um, so that's what I submitted back to, um, McPrinty to see if we can get a quote. He sent me one, but it was a vinyl, he didn't realize what I, what it's asking for, so he's going back and trying to redo. But that's where we're at on that. So that's tabled until I get some more information and we can get our picture updated. And then I'll make the changes to the wording. And then I'll make the changes to the, um, wording.
Very good. What's the tree top, I'm not familiar with that, I'll do business.
Um, there are two trees over at the, where the Dublin Senior Housing is.
Oh, that's Dublin Village Apartments, I kept trying to figure out what DVA was, I'm thinking about that all night.
Dublin Village Apartments. The L-shaped, the grass area and then in the, on Maple Street, and then along the fence to the wellhouse, to the, uh, to the water tower is actually town property. One of the trees is on the town property and one of the trees is on, um, Western Wayne Affordable Housing. What that board recommended is us going in together and having them take both of them down at the same time, they can get a better discount. Um, I talked to T and M, he's done all of our other stuff, uh, cemetery for the town and for Dublin Village Apartments. It hasn't got back with me yet, so I'm still waiting on that, but that's what that entails. Those are pretty big trees.
We can split the cost down the level, is that the intent?
We can, yeah. I don't see a problem with that. I don't see that they'd have a problem with that.
Is that all legality, okay, Bob, if we share with the bill? Donation from Jackie Smith for the cemetery.
Um, we need to, Jackie Smith donated a hundred dollars to the cemetery. No specification on what to use it for, he just said, "People, um, have forgotten what it takes to maintain a cemetery." And because this is his cemetery where he wants to be, he donates, um, every year. And, uh, so, uh, we just need to accept his donation.
Need a motion to accept Jackie's donation?
I'll make it.
Okay, I'll second. Motion will second, all favor aye, any opposed? Do you want to do a thank you card? Great, thank you, Jackie. Uh, you'll see a quote in your, um, packet, um, I'm not going to read the number out loud for the, uh, reason that ideally we'll get other quotes and I wanna keep it fair for the folks, but, uh, as we've been talking about upgrading and making improvements at the park. And it may not happen this year, it may not happen next year as funds allow. But the idea would be where the, uh, old shelter house was, to try and get that, uh, get a roof back over that concrete pad or the under street, they can table that now.
Pads are still good, are they, each one good at all?
Pads, okay, if they would do a better job spraying the weeds, but yeah, there's grass growing up into the picking tables right now, or, yeah. And then there's another pad over right against the fence for the, uh, old softball diamond, the one down in the bottom of the bowl.
Used to be bleachers on it.
Yeah, used to be bleachers on it, and, uh, so that would be a good place to put a couple of tables. So that's what, uh, these two, uh, two spots that you see are, is those two concrete pads. So so far I've only got one, I got another one that's supposed to be giving me one, so if you guys know of folks, builders, bring back the information, so just keep the numbers to yourself, that way it's fair for all those bidding, obviously.
I did reach out to the school, I don't know who is in charge of that department, but I reached out to the, um, administration and no one ever called me back to see, 'cause I, I thought they had a program.
Well, I know Pat Reddick, that's where he retired. And the girl's name that took over his, I think her name was Lacy something, I can't think of it off the top of my head.
Okay.
But, uh, I believe they've been pretty busy in the last couple of weeks too with the FFA convention.
Right.
Her name's Lacy something.
What about the, uh, school carnival, they go down there for trades and stuff? You think they'd be interested in something like that? Carnival where?
Oh, the building trades down there? Yeah, I don't know if their schedule will allow, 'cause usually they build a house every year.
Okay.
So at least they did when I went, I think they still do. But maybe if we were to get on their schedule early enough, this would be their project for that year, you know, if we planned it out two or three years down the road. And then, you know, the big question falls down to if we do it ourselves, you know, what type of funds can we allot, you know? And it may not happen this year with us just putting a bunch of money into the matching grant for the foreign place stuff, so. I got Julie doing some thinking on that. I said, "Check out the rainy day fund, see what we can work out of it," so.
I said, "Coach, definitely you're a guy."
Yeah, that's right. So that's what that's all about, but if you know somebody that wants to, uh, put a bid in, and it'd be ideal if you could maybe just tell them that measurement, so it's apples for apples.
Yeah.
So that would be nice.
The rain is, it's not enclosed?
No, it's basically, with, basically matched to the one we got.
Once done, okay, but it's enclosed, so you can't climb up and rent it.
Right, it's got a ceiling, but I mean, there's no walls.
Yeah, that's what I meant, okay. All right, sounds good.
Basically keep the birds out.
Yeah.
And, um, timeline, if we are able to do it, what kinda timeline, just like with the school and stuff? It's gonna be a year or two years out or what have you?
Is it safe to say we probably don't have those funds this year?
It is probably safe to say yes, simply because, um, excess money that we had put back matching funds that went to paving, um, has gone for the extra amounts for the foreign place and for the sidewalks. Some of that money is restricted, so that, that's the money that definitely will go to the sidewalks, 'cause it's part of streets. And since we weren't going to do any paving because we're gonna be tearing up maybe some roads to, 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 uh, water lines or meters and that, um, we had decided to put that towards getting all the sidewalks done, so most of that money's pretty well gone this year. We can work on it, unless like, you know, somebody wants to donate.
While you're talking to T and M, I think we're gonna see them, see if they can take that tree down up there on Johnson Street down there by the corner where that top of the.
You talk to property owners first, 'cause that's their responsibility, that's, uh, uh, you know, Marion Pickett owns that property on the corner there.
Well, he owns both sides of the road?
Well, he owns, uh, the property right there, the trees on it.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
What trees is?
There's a big dead tree up there in the corner, the curve where Johnson Street turns.
And South Street, right there, yeah, he owns, yeah, he owns his trailer in the lot there that had the tree. You can contact him first, 'cause I feel like, you know, we need to, but we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, but it's his tree, we don't wanna cut it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also don't wanna repair it.
We tell other people to trim their trees back and stuff, and it's gonna be hard for us to go.
He's, uh, and Lenny has been doing that for, um, definitely the alleys, he's been trying to, um, put together letters and, and giving them to homeowners that they need to trim their.
Well, another good one is, uh, on Spring Street is, uh, Lane Kennedy.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, uh, that's getting out of hand down there in that corner.
Yeah, one lane down that way.
Depending on what work you're gonna do in the park shelter, it may very well be deemed a public works project, even on a small scale. So technically, and this may be a little premature, 'cause you're not quite there yet, but when you do get there, you really should have kinda specs and tell people who are gonna quote exactly what you're looking for, so that you're comparing apples with apples.
I basically tell them to match what is already there and trying to replicate that existing structure. It's kinda what I'm verbally saying.
Okay.
As far as, you know, color and ceiling and, so they've got something to look at, it's just a matter of the size.
And if everybody, I can, if everybody is okay with these specs that are on this quote, I can put that in just a specification sheet.
Yeah, it's probably underneath the level financially of having to do sealed bids and things like that, but you still go out and solicit quotes, and so you want everybody quoting on the same type of thing, so I'm glad you're telling them. And that would help.
I thought Bob was getting ready to say, "Here, let me write this check for you."
No, I was not getting it.
Merry Christmas in July.
Yeah, have a shelter.
Okay, is there any other business we need to bring up and make the agenda tonight?
Bob's still going.
Oh, they go first, they're council people.
Yes, sir.
They, uh, golf carts.
Golf carts, you need to pay your registrations.
Well, we need to let the police enforce that, I think, a little bit, but I think there's some running around, it's not been paid. And I've seen some small children, and I didn't, couldn't remember what kinda restrictions we put on to could drive these golf carts. So we get kid out here, get one hurt, then nobody be able to drive the golf carts, fool around town.
Yeah, he, he said something to the family right up the street here, but they've not come in and got theirs yet. I'm not sure, just get with me afterwards and we can.
I, I don't know who they are, I just, I see them running around town.
I know there's a blue one.
And, uh, but I have seen some small children on one.
And I told her to get it too, just FYI. Okay, thank you.
Tell what else?
I also told her she needs to get it, so.
If I'm not mistaken, I think it says you have to be a licensed driver.
Sixteen, I thought.
I couldn't, I didn't, 'cause I looked it up, I didn't know if I know what I was talking about.
Well, she was.
I know for the side to side, the state's got a registration.
Yeah, we don't.
She's still cutting the project costs?
Not on the side-by-side. Yeah, I charged somebody for a side-by-side and Lenny's like, "No, you don't have to do that, they don't need ones."
Well, they've gotta have state registration now.
Yeah.
But now are the side to sides able, able to run on state highways?
If they got the little sticker, it's from the state.
Okay, I, I've seen them, I've been running them down the road, and I didn't know if, uh, those golf carts and things are not supposed to be on board.
They've got a little green sticker they send you, and it's good for two years.
Okay.
When you register it, that you put on, and it has to be, be able to be seen, you know, either side, if they pull you over, but and you actually get a registration for it.
I don't know how that would work, I've never had to deal with them, so I don't know how they work. But I've seen quite a few people all on the road with them, and some in the fast, so.
They're doing the same thing for ATVs.
Need to, I see a lot of them out there.
Did you wanna add something, Bob, a minute ago?
Yeah, I was just, I was just now looking up about the.
Golf carts.
The golf carts, who can drive.
That's a sticker, about like you put on a boat?
But if the, uh, we're paying the police to be around, then they might as well, if they see it, they can, you know, enforce some of that too. Like I said, if somebody gets hurt and then they'll, everybody'll say, "Oh, we gotta stop that, you can't do that." And it's kinda droll, just got to ride around late and evening. It's all, it's all, like having a convertible, which you can't afford.
Yeah.
Yes, it says every person riding a golf cart has to obey all state laws. It may not be operated by a person less than sixteen years of age for purpose of a golf cart and less than fifteen years of age for the, for a moped or scooter. By a person who, they must have a state issued identification card or motor vehicle operator's license. That may be referred to the fifteen-year-olds for the moped and the scooter, so.
We don't do the motor, moped and scooter anymore, 'cause the state.
Yeah. And they have to, to get that, you have to show proper insurance coverage too. No, what I was going to, you recall that the Cambridge City Marshal, um, was having a problem for a while enforcing town ordinances because he said his software didn't allow it for that. Well, so he was, he was gonna go get a ticket book, the old-fashioned ticket book, but then what he's determined now that he can expand his software so it can include ordinance violations. And the ones most often used inside here are the dogs running loose and the violations of the open burning ordinances. So, but the software has in there, how long do they have to pay a fine? Well, I've gone through your code book and you've got a hundred places that things can be fined if they don't do something. Um, and then they also have another section that if they don't pay the fine, we can take them to court here to send the reports to the town attorney who then can then take them to court. If you take them to court, you add a hundred dollars because of the court, um, involvement on there. But nowhere does it say, "How long do they have to pay the fine before you take them to court?" So even though it requires a fine, it says if they don't pay it, you can take them to court, but what's that timeframe in between? The only one that has it is on traffic violations, that it says traffic violations have to be paid within a one week's time. And so with your approval, I was just gonna tell him on his software to put in there that they have one week before we do it. We can also put thirty days or something, it's whatever you want, but he's looking for some answer from me as far as how long do you wanna give them before you would take them to court if they don't pay the fine?
Personally, thirty days sounds good to me.
Thirty days.
What do you guys think?
I have two days. No, I, two weeks to thirty days.
Twenty-four hours.
You need a motion on that?
Yeah, just, or, yeah, direction from all of you, yeah, 'cause if you say one day, he says another day, then I am lost.
Thirty days is fine.
Yeah, I make thirty, I'm pushing a thirty days, make a motion.
Motion and a second from Bree?
Second.
Did you catch all that?
No, didn't catch it.
Okay, we are having a timeline of when we issue a ordinance, the ticket violation, how long they have to pay that.
Okay.
So it'll be thirty days, and then they go with contempt.
And then they're subject, then they're subject to prosecution.
Okay.
So thirty days, motion to approve? Any opposed?
Go back, who, who motioned?
Rex.
Rex's motion, and who? Bree, thank you.
And the rest were in favor, giving us a unanimous vote.
Got it.
Okay, any other business? All right, the last two final things on the agenda are to approve the bills and to approve the financial reports. The first will go through the bills.
I make a motion, we accept the claims, says presenter.
There's a motion, is there a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, may pay the bills, ma'am. All right, last thing's the financial report, any questions over that? Anything out of the ordinary?
Don't I know what it is?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
All right, there's a motion to accept the claims.
I'll second it.
Or the, uh, financial report, Rex second it, all favor aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, we'll see you all next month.